We're going to call this meeting to order. We'll start off with a roll call. Here.
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 Next, we'll move into a moment of silent prayer or private reflection. Amen. And if everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And do we have a possible motion for an executive session?
I don't think so.
Seeing there's none, we'll move on to spotlights and recognitions. We have Carol Norakowski with the Lake Havasu City Education Association. And then it looks like we'll be moving on to a call to the public. We have Christine Simmons, if you'd like to come up to the microphone.
Hello, everyone. And if you'll just push the button. The white one. Okay, I'm green. That's good. All right, can you hear me okay? Okay. I'm here because I've been following school districts across the country. And it's, the mama bears and papa bears are out in numbers. In fact, my old district that I taught in for 38 years has been in the news recently. Very disheartening to see. In fact, when they came out from the school board meeting, they were attacked by Antifa. So there's really high energy everywhere going on with school districts. I have to say, I was so delighted when I went on and researched Havasu School District. We're not like that. We're not in the news. And I saw your wonderful podcasts, which I thought were so informative for parents, and your toolbox that gives children how to deal with their emotions and things that they're confronted with. And I thought, now, this is what we should be doing. But Kingman School District just took out a couple books that I wanted to make you aware of as well. They were removed because of their language and their content. One book is called The Ready Player One by Ernest Cline. The other book is Warm Bodies by Isaac Marion. Very offensive and explicit language and sexual content that should not be assigned reading and should not be in schools. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. I know you're vigilant about what's coming out from publishing companies and what you can allow in your schools and in your classrooms. Another thing that I was kind of disappointed to see that there aren't many PTAs anymore. I guess Starline has a PTA, but I don't know of any other schools that have, there are more PTAs. Good. Okay. Because they were such an important factor in the classroom. I used to have three to four parents every day volunteering in my kindergarten room, and I could not have done the program I did without their assistance. But I'm finding out, when I talk to some parents now, they say that they're really discouraged from getting involved in the classroom and observing their child in the classroom. My plumber had a special needs child, and they were having some difficulties, and he wanted to observe him, but really was discouraged to observe him in the classroom, which I thought, that's kind of strange. I mean, the classroom doesn't belong to the teacher. It doesn't belong to the principal. It belongs to the taxpayer and the parent, and especially if his child's in that classroom. So I hope that's not always the case. And so just embrace parents. They want to help, and they want to get involved. And so thank you so much for what you're doing, and it's so nice to see us not in the news. So take care. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to 4.1, we have our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Moving on to action items, we have Dr., or Superintendent Stone with the second reading of the trust model policies.
Thank you, Mr. President. So tonight, you are getting the second reading or the presentation for adoption. The initial readings of the trust model policies was done on May 9th and May 11th, and these have been available since that time on board docs. We've received no feedback, and there have been no changes since the first readings.
I move to rescind and nullify all current and past policies of Lake Havasu Unified School District Number One and adopt the trust model policies as presented.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.2, we have Superintendent Stone with the Career Coach Counselor IGA.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. College access and attainment is an important aspect of high school education. LHHS provides counselors and a career center to support students in this process. However, we do not have someone who is able to focus solely on college access and attainment measures. Mojave County Community College and WAVE-CTED have partnered together to provide districts with a career coach counselor position for the next three school years. This position is intended to increase college access and attainment measures of students currently enrolled or recently graduated from Lake Havasu High School. The career coach counselor will focus on supporting students to meet the data measures listed in Exhibit A. Those are mostly how many students are enrolled, how many students are able to persist through their first year of college classes, and how well are they doing. MCC and WAVE will reimburse the district for this position's salary up to $75,000 annually, and the district will pay for the employees' benefits. The attached IGA has been reviewed and approved as deformed by our legal counsel.
I think this is a great opportunity. I think at our high schools, sometimes the top students are kind of left by the wayside because they kind of know what to do, and their parents kind of know what to do. But I don't think they really do know everything that they need to do to get ready for college. And we've been in such a triage approach with our high school students that getting, you know, getting a position that we're, in a sense, only paying benefits for, that can address that and can help these students, coach them to do, you know, take that next step, whether it's, you know, something with WAVE or something with going on to college, is a great step forward for the high school. So I make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.3, Student Services, Occupational Therapy Services and Comp Health.
Thank you, members of the board. LHUSD is obligated to ensure the provision of related services for eligible students to receive a free, appropriate public education as required under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. LHUSD continues to actively recruit to fill the two occupational therapy positions within the district. We have been unsuccessful to date at filling these openings with qualified district employees. During the 22-23 school year, LHUSD contracted with Comp Health Medical Staffing, an approved vendor as part of the SAFE contract. The district has been satisfied with the services provided to our students this school year. The contract renewal for the 23-24 school year allows for LHUSD to contract with clinicians for services delivered virtually and/or in person, as described in the contract. Rachel Hunger has been identified as a qualified occupational therapist, and I apologize, the item says "in person," but she will be virtual, through Comp Health, who will serve LHUSD during the upcoming school year. Funds from the MNO budget will be used to pay for these services, and this contract has previously been reviewed by purchasing and legal.
I've got a daughter that's directly affected by this, so I propose that we accept it.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.4, Student Achievement, Leader in Me Supplementary Curriculum for Thunderbolt Middle School.
Mr. President and Governing Board, starting this fall, Thunderbolt Middle School will be adding a homeroom to their schedule. Classes at Thunderbolt are currently 70 minutes. The addition of a 25-minute homeroom period to start the day will be beneficial to Thunderbolt because it will shorten class periods to 60 minutes and provide students for an opportunity to meet with an adult on campus who checks with them daily, access smaller class group to connect with regularly and build positive relationships, receive explicit instruction and practice in character/leadership skills, have a set weekly time to go on to student view and check grades, organize resources, set academic goals and study, learn and practice secondary studies skills, hear school announcements and happenings in a format other than the loudspeaker where there can be discussion. In addition to the time spent building rapport, communicating about student events, and providing help on assignments, homeroom time will be used to work through a character education program. Thunderbolt staff and families reviewed three character education programs that are supplementary to the Toolbox Project used in elementary school. Leader in Me is an evidence-based, comprehensive model that builds leadership and life skills, and students create a high-trust school culture and lays the foundation for sustained academic achievement. There are over 5,000 Leader in Me schools in all 50 states and in over 50 countries. The program supports leadership, responsibility, accountability, problem-solving, and adaptability skills that are transferable as life and academic skills. Leader in Me was developed using Stephen Covey's The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People and is grounded in the premise that every person is a leader. Students will spend 25 minutes at the beginning of the day in homeroom for small group connections between teacher and students and with their peers. They will discuss school happenings and announcements, focus on study skills, and engage in the Leader in Me curriculum. This program was selected based on pricing. Leader in Me is approved by the Arizona Department of Education. In order to be prepared for a successful start to the school year, lessons have been piloted and feedback from students, counselors, and teachers have been gathered and focused to focus on successful implementation. Leader in Me implementation will cost $27,250.50, which includes an annual membership with student and classroom materials, professional development, coaching, and posters. The ongoing cost is approximately $7,304 for curriculum and $4,000 for ongoing PD each year thereafter. This has been reviewed by Business Services and Student Achievement.
As you know, I came to you with a lot of concerns about this, and so I want you to kind of let you step through kind of those concerns and how they were addressed.
Absolutely.
So the first thing was kind of the process for which it was approved, since it's kind of a mini curriculum. Could you talk about maybe how the site councils did that and kind of the makeup of the site councils?
So the site council is made up of parents and teachers and our administrators, and the information was provided to the staff. The staff was able to pilot lessons and kind of work through those and step through them, and then that information was provided to the site council. The site council did have some very informative questions. They wanted to know, like, why this specific one, why not other ones? So it wasn't just, yes, whatever the teachers want. They had really good questions. They were able to review the materials and eventually came to the same conclusion that the teachers came to and the administration, that this was the program that they did want to move forward with. That information, this program, and the lessons and the information will all be available to parents for their review, as is any lesson that we teach in our schools. If parents see something that they do not want their children to partake in, they can certainly ask to be excused from any specific lesson that is involved. So the process, while in here, we talked about the fact that teachers and students and all of those people got to see it, counselors, parents did also get to see it, they were a part of the process. From that process, everyone agreed to bring this forward to the school board for approval.
Can you give some of the reasons why this one was particularly preferred over the other ones?
I didn't get the specific reason. Do you have the actual specific reasons? I think time and class. Because they went in thinking they were picking another program. But once they saw the content, the lessons, how they were provided to students, they actually changed their mind, which was a little bit shocking. So. The other thing you asked about was, are we considering the fact that 70-minute classes are a long time? Are there ways to make other opportunities for students? And I shared with you that we are starting this year with a homeroom period to see, first of all, to build that culture. It's important, especially at the middle school level, to build that culture, build the trust with students, have that interaction where kids feel connected and belonging. And then the next piece in that is evaluating, how did this 25 minutes go? What did it look like when we took that out of those classes? Does it need to actually be 25 minutes? Could it be a little less? And is there an opportunity to then pull a few minutes from the other classes, bringing them to under 60 minutes, which would allow possibly for more opportunities for kids, probably for electives, in a future schedule? So all of that has started by this homeroom conversation and adding that piece to build culture.
I really like the idea that we are considering, you know, ways to find more options for students. I know that, you know, many middle schools, junior highs, six and seven classes is the norm, and I think our students would really like to have some of those opportunities. I know a lot of that is finding teachers, and that's a hard thing. So one thing I would like to propose is that next year at this meeting, we get an update on where we are with this program and the opportunities we have to maybe do the six-period scheduling. And then if we do that, this has much support for this year.
I like that option. Is that your motion?
I will make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second it.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.5, Business Services, Fiscal Year 24, Proposed Preliminary Budget.
Mr. President, Board members, Arizona Revised Statute 15-905 requires each district to annually prepare a proposed budget no later than July 5th and furnish it to the Arizona Department of Education. After approval by the Governing Board, the proposed budget summaries and notice of public hearing will be published on the ADE website. The meeting to adopt the budget is scheduled for July 10th, 2023. A copy of the proposed budget was placed before you here at this meeting. I have a PowerPoint, as always, to review. This will also be posted on the district's website. So again, the purpose, as I just read in the action item, aligns with state statute. The preliminary budget presentation includes just an overview of the forms, the reports, average daily membership, how we arrive at the budget number and budget capacity through the calculations, the budgeted expenditures, and then any questions, as well as the transparency page where everyone can see where they can access these documents. So again, budgeted forms, these are just snapshots of what some of the forms look like or the reports actually look like when I pull them from the state. I gather these reports and then begin to populate the spreadsheets. So the first area is average daily membership. I take the BSA 55-1 or the ADM 20 report, and I take that data of everything that's reported to the state as far as student counts through average daily membership, and then I begin to populate the data page. And one of the data sections, this is just a tiny screenshot of the long data spreadsheet, but this is where I begin to plug in those numbers. And as I plug in average daily membership for current fiscal year and then projections for next fiscal year, because of current year funding, we have to estimate what our student council will look like going into fiscal year 24 and actually going into the 100th day of school in 2024. So that becomes quite a chore as we look at historical trends and just kind of look at enrollment trends that's currently before us in fiscal year 23. We pretty much have seen relatively flat enrollment throughout the district over the many years. COVID kind of put a little bit of a curveball, gave us a little bit of a curveball on that as we did lose some students right there at the beginning of COVID, but then we did gain most of them back post-COVID. So that's what this data sheet looks like. The projection, as you can see, for fiscal year 24, as I just mentioned, is relatively flat compared to what we see right now. The calculations tab and continuing, the yellow section there, that's already pre-populated by the state, that's the actual numbers that the legislature adopted and approved in the state budget for base support. And you can see that there, the $4,914.71 figure. That is then used as a multiplier and towards the calculation of multiplying with average daily membership and other factors. The SEDAR report is used to allow us to look at what our average teacher experience index looks like. So HR provides this information to the state annually, and then that is calculated based on the averages within the state. Anything above 1.0 means that we are exceeding the average. Anything less than 1.0 means that we're below the average. And however greater or smaller that number is, will determine how much we exceed the average or how much we miss the average. In this case, based on the last SEDAR report, we're at .96. So we're just slightly under 1.0, which would be the average. So relatively speaking, it's not too bad. We don't take a hit for that, so we automatically get to put in 1.0 as our multiplier, so there's no penalty for being underneath the state average, so we don't lose money for that. However, we do not gain money. And if we were to actually exceed the average for years of experience of a teacher, then we would actually benefit from that. Currently, though, we are just slightly below the average. Calculations tab that is then populated throughout the budget sheet, this populates as I put in the average daily membership and the Group B add-ons. Group B add-ons, as I've said many times before, but as I present that way, those who may, this may be the first time that you're hearing this, Group B add-on weights are additional weighted counts that we receive for those students who qualify for special services. So per the state of Arizona and the funding mechanism for the state of Arizona, if we have students who qualify for additional services, then that is accounted for in the state funding model to provide additional funds. In most cases, the weight is very small, so the impact of supporting those students, we benefit slightly from that, but there are other cases where students' service needs are far more expensive, whether it be through equipment or personnel to help them, the weighted count is actually a little bit higher so that we do receive more funds to meet their needs. So as the spreadsheet continues to populate through the data entry tab, we then begin to see the real numbers start to generate in actual budget numbers form. So based on our average daily membership and any students that we receive or that we have that are through our online portal or online platform, we do receive some funding for them as well. And we are projecting, as you can see here, roughly 7,000 students. That includes the wait-on category. So that's the average daily membership. It's not 7,000 belly buttons in the seat. It's 7,000 with those weighted counts for additional services that a student may need. So as that's multiplied by the base level, as we saw in the previous slide in that yellow rectangle, times $4,914.71, we can see there that we're just over $35 million as we start putting our budget numbers together. Now, as we transition, continuing on in the calculations data tab, we start to put together our district additional assistance number. This is additional funding that's given to districts across the state. The main purpose for district additional assistance is to help us with our capital needs in purchasing equipment, vehicles, those items that typically have a useful life of more than a year and that can be repaired rather than just thrown out and discarded. So these are capital items, monies that will help us in sustaining our capital needs. So you can see at the top in the red squares along the top of how they break it out from our preschool to K-8 students and 9 through 12 students. The average daily membership is plugged in there at the top with the weighted dollar amount or the dollar amount that's provided for each of those subgroups. And then we have the calculation of what we would qualify for for district additional assistance. And in this fiscal year coming up, in fiscal year 24, we're projected to receive just over $3 million, $3,590,000. And you can see on the left side of the presentation, I provide the historical district additional assistance, so we can see where we came from back in fiscal year 18. And just before that, the state put a mandatory reduction across the entire state of 85%, where they allowed us to calculate those nice numbers off to the right-hand side, like the $3 million numbers. And then for many years, there was a line just below that that said, "reduction." And then we saw a big negative right underneath that number. And you can see there in 2018 that we went from millions of dollars to supply and to help support our capital needs across the district to just hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I always point this out, that you cannot sustain a district with nine facilities with $300,000. The air conditioning units alone would far exceed that, just on an annual need to replace outdated, inefficient, non-working equipment. That's where we lived for several years. And again, I point this out, during those times, we had to fall back on MNO heavily. So MNO is our general fund that is used to repair. 85% of MNO is used for salaries and benefits, but it's also to repair, to provide purchase services. So when we couldn't replace equipment that actually needed to be replaced, we were trying to put a Band-Aid on something that should have gone away, but instead, we were trying to make it work, as inefficient as it was, to get us through these difficult times where we only had a few hundred thousand dollars to address capital needs across the district. Now we're in a much better place. We've seen that over the last few years. You can see the historical trend improve. The reduction is no longer there. That line is no longer there, and that makes me very happy because we can now more fully budget for our capital needs, and that includes curriculum and other necessities that we The next slide shows the calculation tab or the calculation sheet for the MNO override. So this is just a simple formula-driven sheet where I plug in the average daily membership. I have to select in this fiscal year. Sadly, this is the last, the seventh and final year of the MNO override, so we are facing a 2/3 reduction of what we normally would have received for the, that we received over the first five years. This year, we had a 1/3 reduction. So in year six, we experienced a phase down. So this year, we experienced a 1/3 reduction. Next year in '24, this budget year that we're talking about, will be a 2/3 reduction. And then when I come see you this time next year, this sheet won't even be on the slide. So there will be a $0 amount for the MNO override at this particular time. Now, we have had discussions and continue to have discussions about the timing of putting that back before you and the public to see when that would be a good time to continue to address our needs and to sustain those needs, again, for another five years fully funded, seven years total though, six and seven years being partially funded MNO override. So we do have reason to be thankful that we still have a third of that money left at this point.
Have we approached Steve Greeley in the committee that did this last time?
Yes, and there have been others who have actually approached us as well. So yes.
That's good.
So the timing of an election and when this goes on to a ballot is in discussion, as well as just the prep work leading up to truly identifying what our needs are and getting that out in front of the public so that we can talk about true needs, not wants. so that we can talk about true needs, not wants, but true needs. And then I think that as we gather that and have those talking points, I think that it can be very convincing when we identify our needs. So that is to come. Page seven of the budget forms. This is a shrunk-down version of that. There's, so I can get it on the slide here for you. But this is where everything starts to come together. So you'll see the column A, column B. Column A is the maintenance and operations fund. Column B is the unrestricted capital outlay. And this is where we actually come to our general budget limit that we set our expenditures to so that we can provide this budget capacity before you, before the public. You can see here that in column A, at the very bottom of that column, the calculations come out to be at 57 million, so just under $58 million for fiscal year '24. That includes the one-third remaining of the override. Budget balance carryforward. It includes the Prop 123 monies that are there on line 10. And it also includes new this year in the highlighted yellow section, the, on line 11, the allocation of the one-time state aid supplement. And this was brought about in the budget session with the legislatures and eventually signed by the governor, that there would be a one-time allocation of roughly $300 million across the state, divided up and sent out to districts. Our portion of that, and this is estimated because that's what, this is all subject to change as the state does a recalculation of student enrollment and student counts across the state. The number can fluctuate up or down. I don't anticipate it being a huge swing either way, but roughly based on the formulas that they've given us and the calculation that they, the formula that they told us to calculate by, we come up with just over 1.4 million, which is our portion of that. And again, that's one time. It goes into our budget and it becomes part of our overall budget limit. It's subject to carryforward. So it's not a use it or lose it. It's part of just our overall budget limit. As we meet our expenditures or if we're slightly under our expenditures, it rolls forward like savings and we can continue to use it as we move forward into the next year and so on. But it's all blended together. So there's no way to identify whether or not we use that particular portion of money or not. There's no special funding code for it. It's not earmarked in any way. It just goes straight into the general fund. The next slide, I wanted to be very clear as we talked to directors as well, the one-time state aid supplement. So as we spoke about this, we did have conversations about how this money would be used or how any additional state funding would be used. So on this slide, I'm just going to read it so that way we can make sure that it's clear. So for the fiscal year '24 budget, the district's estimated one-time state aid supplement allocation is approximately 1.4 million. As communicated in transitioning to salary schedules, all funding increases from the state will assist in efforts to sustain the recently approved salary schedules and annual step increases in the years to come. Additional funding from federal, state, and local funds will also aid in these efforts. To clarify from previous discussions and conversations during the creation and establishment of salary schedules and annual step increases, cost of living adjustments, or COLA, will no longer be provided. So as the HR department and others, ninety, over ninety-seven percent from HR, they worked really hard over the last several months of this year to really come together and provide a template, a proposal, as they looked at salary schedules and studies to come up with a very competitive and very aggressive salary schedule so that we can promote, we can recruit, retain our staff. And everyone's doing that throughout the country. You can't turn on, you can't watch anything or read anything anymore without seeing the private sector or public sector trying to be very competitive and just getting people to work. So that's the reality of 2023. Whether we like that or don't like it, that's our reality in trying to just provide services and especially these important services of instruction in teaching kids. So just to be clear, in all of that conversation, to be that aggressive, I mentioned as we proposed the compensation package a few months ago that we need every bit of money so we can sustain this longer term. With an override that's phasing out, we do have a healthy carryforward. I've talked about that since 2018. I came here in 2017. I got my bearings straight. I got my feet on the ground and got a layout of the land. And then from 2018, and I think most of you have been in those budget sessions, what has been communicated out of my mouth from day one has happened to this date. So my forecasting, my budget planning, we have never faced a cliff. We've never had cause to even think about riffing people. We've been strategic in trying to gradually increase salaries over time. We didn't react to giving everything upfront. And now, like some of our neighboring areas where they've done that, and now they're facing very difficult situations and making decisions that are not very comfortable financially. So we've allowed for, I think, a conservative but a positive trajectory of salaries and benefits over the years to get us to where we are now. But in conversation about this, it was very clear that all of these additional monies need to be put in a bucket, which is our general fund bucket, to sustain these salary increases longer term. And I gave the sustainability timeframe of three to five years with these, this new money, with the 2.9% increase that we receive from the state, even though 2% of that was mandatory inflation money. I'm more confident that pending something doesn't happen. But I'm much more confident that we're towards the five-year mark and maybe even beyond that than the three-year mark at this point. So again, I will say thank you to our elected officials. We may not always agree on everything, but I think that them doing something and providing something to public education is at least worth a thank you. And we continue to hopefully have good, meaningful dialogue moving forward and having level heads and being able to communicate and articulate true needs. So again, I think we're in a pretty good place moving forward. And I just, we just wanted to make this clear so that, you know, COLA would be nice. We've been used to that for several years, but that was a Band-Aid. We now have a fix. And I think we hopefully will just recognize that as we have a fix for fiscal year '24 and we need to continue on with that fix. Sustainable salaries and decent increases, cost of living increases, that's basically what that is. And we'll monitor that year after year after year. If the salary schedule needs to be tweaked a little bit, maybe the state comes back with very generous and we look at the salary schedule again to determine whether or not that needs to be updated. So it is what it is right now for fiscal year '24. But in my opinion, and I know the directors and superintendent think the same, that is a workable document as we see fit to address it as a workable document. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. We appreciate everybody. And we hope that you can see that. We appreciate you. We're trying to be extremely aggressive. But if we want to continue to move forward, this is now the clear path forward. So page one of the budget form. Again, this is nothing new. This is the MNO budget laid out and across the object codes, the bottom-right corner is our general budget limit. That number reconciles to page seven, which is the page that we just saw. And that tells us that our expenditure planning is in line with the state's budget capacity that they've given us. And as long as we don't exceed that, we're just fine. And as long as I've been here and even before that, I don't remember us ever exceeding it, but we try to live right there to that budget capacity. Budget expenditures for capital, very much the same thing. The green circle with the arrow, that reconciles to page seven as we remember two slides ago. There was the column A, column B. Column B is unrestricted capital or district additional assistance. That three-point, that $3,590,000 figure is the actual figure that we saw on page seven. So what we're budgeting for in capital is in line with our budget capacity. We're not planning to ever exceed that number there in the red circle. Currently, based on what we're seeing now for, even though we haven't closed our books yet, that doesn't happen till like September, we're looking at roughly 9.7 million in capital funding that's sitting there for fiscal year '24 and beyond. That never goes away. We add to it, we expend to it. We're not, the only thing we're limited to is that we just don't spend more than that. So as long as we don't spend more than the $9.7 million, we're okay. But that is earmarked for capital projects, capital meaning equipment, like I mentioned before. The next slide is that same, that same, is the same number as the slide before, just in detailed form, just like that page one of MNO. As long as we don't expend more than that red circle area down below in that bottom-right corner, again, which reconciles this time to page eight, which was the slide just before this, we're good. The only time that we get in trouble is if we're going to spend more than that. And I don't ever plan on that happening. Expenditure budget for Fund 010. This is classroom site fund. So based on the calculation in the lower-left corner, that's kind of the calculator, if you will, to determine what our classroom site fund amount will be for next year. You can see that in the yellow section, next year it'll be based on $758 per pupil. As we calculate that out, again, this can go up or down based on the statewide recalculation of students in the state. But right now, based on the amounts that we've had to date, you can see what we've expended. And the unexpended budget amount, we, this year, we had two additional payments that came into classroom site funds after we paid them out. This happens every year. The year before that had probably two additional payments that came in from the year before that. The state is not exactly timely on all of their revenue dispersments. So we have to take them as we get them. They are getting better. I will give them credit for that. But you can see there at the bottom-left corner, we're roughly at $5.9 million available for fiscal year '24 dispersment and distribution of those funds. And that ties out up at the top, the top-right corner. Those two numbers match. Again, as long as we don't exceed the budget capacity, we are good. You can see that all of these dollars are budgeted in salaries and benefits. And they go to those staff members that qualify for classroom site funds. The overwhelming majority of them are teachers. We do have a few others that do qualify because they do have some teaching responsibilities and they hold a valid teaching certificate. This last year, although you'll see that in October when I present the annual financial report, this year for classroom site funds, I want to say the final payout was just over $11,000 and plus the $2,000 that we distributed throughout the year in the bi-weekly paycheck. So it was roughly $13,000 and change for those who receive these additional classroom site funds. So this is in addition to their salaries and benefits. So this is, we're committed to give almost every dollar to those staff that qualify for it. We do allow, the state does allow for us to use classroom site funds for other things at this time and for the future that I can see. I don't propose that we change the model at this time. And I think that it works well and it gives our instructional staff a little something extra for going above and beyond. The next slide, this is just a very, this is just a summary of all of the different, not, actually, it's not all the funds because you can see there are some that are collapsed where it shows Funds 300 to 399. I think it's because they didn't want to make this report more than just this page. They kind of collapsed some things, but here are all the different funds that we manage throughout the district to help meet the district's need, whether it be from grant funding through Title I and other federal programs to certain cash-controlled funds, like when we rent out the Civic Center, for example, Civic Center funds, when we rent out the PAC and other parts of our district facilities. There are some other revenue streams that are brought into this. But so many of those things, like the Civic Center, turn right around and we pay our staff who are there to open and close the doors or run the microphones and the mixers to allow the performance to happen. So much of this does go back into personnel, but it also goes to improving facilities as well when there's a need. So various funds are outlined here on this page of the budget document. And again, all of this will be uploaded, not only to the state, but it will be on our district website. And we'll see that here in just a second, two more slides. This is the cover page. This is just the, that first page. You can see on the top left, this is the proposed budget happening on this date. We can expect to see these uploaded to our website and to the state by the end of this week. More than likely, it'll be tomorrow, maybe Thursday. But we put the date there. We extended it out a little bit so that in case there is a hiccup, we give ourselves a couple extra days. But this will be posted on our website, fully transparent for people to look at if they want to. And this shows you how to do that. So this last slide, as always, you can go to the website. You can click on these particular links here that I put arrows next to. If you have any questions, you can email myself, the business office, or call, and we can walk you through the forms and we can point you in the direction on how to access it. So whichever need you have, we can do our best to try to help you and assist you.
I just want to say thank you to you and your staff, Mike. Very detailed, very transparent. And I think that's something that is very, I think we're all very proud of as a district.
Thank you.
I move that we accept the presentation as presented.
I'll second it.
Calm you?
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.6 and one of our four annual renewals, business services and the CPA auditing services.
Mr. President, members of the board, on February 7, 2022, the district released a request for proposal for CPA auditing services. On April 19, 2022, the governing board awarded Heinfeld Meach the contract for CPA auditing services, which included an option of up to four annual renewals. This is the first of four possible annual renewals. The cost proposal for the RFP is attached to reference costs for auditing services for the fiscal year end of June 30, 2023.
Have they been doing a good job for us?
They have. Yes, they have. And they come and present every year to the board in a special session, work session. I don't, I think that we're the only district that actually asks them to do that. So they're willing to bring our auditing results to you and put themselves in front of you for any questions that you have of them as well.
My dad was a CPA, so I know what I'm talking about.
I move that we accept 6.6 as presented.
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.7, business services. The 2023 Moving on to 6.7, Business Services, the 2023-2024 school meal prices.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board members, USDA requires that there is equity in school lunch pricing, a provision that requires school districts to charge students for paid meals at a price that is on average equal to the difference between free meal reimbursement and paid meal reimbursement. Schools that currently charge less for meal prices than the amount needed to create paid lunch equity are required to gradually increase prices over time until they meet the requirement or supplement their food service operating funds with non-federal, federal funds to ensure equity. Historical look at prices for breakfast and lunch are as follows, an increase of 10 cents to lunch prices and 10 cents to breakfast from 2022-23 that's being requested at this time.
I think that's very reasonable. You know, if you're looking at high school and middle school, 3% is not bad. I would wish my restaurant bills only went up 3% this last year, so I, I think this is wonderful.
I move we accept it.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.8, Business Services, District Standardized Apparel Annual Renewal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board members, on May 17th, 2021, the district issued an invitation for bid for district standardized apparel. On June 15th, 2021, the governing board approved an annual district standardized apparel contract with Natural Tees for the 2022 school year with an option of up to four annual renewals. This would be the second of four possible renewals of the contract. Updated apparel pricing for the 2024 school year was obtained, and it was determined that reasonable increases were acceptable due to the increase in the cost of goods.
Have we had any, any issues with this company? Are they still doing a good job for us?
They are. They're very responsive. If there are any issues, they're quick to be a partner and try to address them, but the issues have been less than what I would need to, on the fingers of my hand. So, they're, they're very responsive. Increases roughly a dollar-ish, depending on the type of shirt or the sweatshirt. So, the increase, we determined that that was reasonable as just trying to get anything nowadays is a chore, let alone the pricing of it. So, that roughly dollar increase, there'll be a dollar and change at some places, but we felt that that was, that was reasonable.
I move re-present 6.8 as presented.
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 6.9, Business Services, with Nautilus Elementary, the playground equipment structures and safety surfaces.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board members, as part of the district's commitment to construct, remodel, and renovate school facilities is communicated to voters and identified in the November 2016 bond voter pamphlet, the district is recommending the replacement of the upper and lower playground equipment structures and safety surfaces, safety surface materials at Nautilus Elementary at a not-to-exceed cost of $325,000 to cover incidentals that may present themselves during construction and installation. In May of 2020, the governing board approved the replacement of playground equipment structures and safety surface materials at Ora Grande, Classical Academy, and Starlane Elementary. In 2022, the safety surface material at Jamaica Elementary was replaced during the remodel and renovation work at this campus. In April 2023, the governing board approved the replacement of playground equipment structures and safety surface materials at Havasu-Pai Elementary. Smoke Tree Elementary will be the only remaining school for future playground equipment structures and safety surface replacement, which will be approximately 2024 or 2025. Exerplay will be procured through the One GPA Cooperative Contract. Quotes for equipment, material purchase and installation, equipment design, and digital rendering for both the upper and lower playground areas are included in the action item. Bond capital and/or other allowable capital funds will be used to install playground equipment and safety surface materials. This item has been reviewed and approved by purchasing.
I move that we go ahead and get it purchased.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 610, Business Services, approval to purchase multi-function school bus activity.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board members, student travel occurs throughout the year, and the number of students traveling on each excursion varies. Our regular activity buses transport the vast majority of our students who participate in sports, clubs, and other extracurricular activities. With busy travel schedules, the logistics of transporting multiple groups on any given day can be challenging due to activity driver availability as they adhere to the requirements of hours behind the wheel. A white multi-function school activity bus is a 14-passenger vehicle that can only be used for activity excursions and not door-to-door route service to and from school. The white MFSAB does not require a driver to possess the special bus endorsement or commercial license. CTE Wave is providing funding to purchase the MFSAB for CTE programs in the district. The quote for Canyon State Bus Sales is attached to the agenda item for review by the board. You can see the quantity there of one and the purchase price of $131,277.57. This price includes all requested options, preparation services and parts, plus tax and delivery. The quotes were made through the Mojave Educational Service Cooperative, and a not-to-exceed approval amount of $135,000 is requested to cover any incidentals. This item has been reviewed by purchasing.
So, just making sure it's not for bus routes, that this means like, for example, like a teacher advisor could take, could take their group to a state conference or something in this, in this van.
That's correct. So, what, what this is, so it's a, it's a specially-designed multi-function bus. So, it is built to the standards of a bus. It's not a van that you could purchase, like a 15-passenger transit van that you can go buy it at Ford or wherever. This is, this is a multi-function school activity bus built to safety standards for buses. So, it has all the side railing, all of the impact rating for the sides, the seat belts, the restraints, everything built based on the needs of a school bus. Now, it does not require a CDL or a special bus endorsement. However, we did speak about this just recently, and I spoke to our transportation supervisor, and I spoke to Marsha Becker, who's our CTE coordinator, who's actually, this is, would be their bus. And we, we agree, because there are some concerns about something that happened, I think way before any of us were here, that, that we want to make sure that while that happened in a regular van, this is a, a short bus, that we have safety, we have procedures in place that will be clearly outlined, that we all agree that, that the driver, whoever is getting behind the wheel of this vehicle, not only is trained, they will, they will receive instruction through transportation on how to maneuver the bus, but in addition to that, we want to have procedures in place so that we make sure that that individual getting behind the wheel still complies with, or like unto the standards that the bus drivers themselves have to follow. And what I mean by that is we've had this happen, and it does happen. You have a staff member who works all day, you know, until school gets out, 3 o'clock. They get in a vehicle, they take that trip to Phoenix so that they can go perform or compete, whatever it is, and then at times, they would come back. And so, I think where we get ourselves into an issue where we start to jeopardize safety, we start to maybe compromise that a little bit, is if we allow that to happen when it comes to this type of a vehicle. Now, driver, bus drivers, because they have those endorsements and they follow what's required of the endorsements, they do that because they have proper downtime when they're at an event. They have that downtime of three or four-plus hours to actually rest and take a nap and then travel back. When you have a coach or an advisor, they're usually in a supervisory role where they have to be present and engaged with the kids during that competition. You can't do that. So, our, our procedure will be like unto a bus driver. If you are working, you have to be, you can know, you cannot be behind the wheel for more than eight hours in a 12-hour period. So, if you start your day at 8:00, you end your day at 8:00. So, if that means you're going to Phoenix, and thankfully with CTE, most of these trips, and I don't even really, to be honest with you, know of any trip that has ever gone down and back with a, with a CTE excursion. There, there probably has been, but most of them require overnight stays because they're competing all day long, they're competing multiple days, they're engaged in, in the, in the seminar or wherever they're participating in, the conference for multiple days. So, that in and of itself will take care of what we're concerned about. But just to have it in writing procedurally, that will be the procedure. 12 hours is your day. You, you, you can't exceed that in driving a vehicle like this, especially with kids on, onboard. So, that way, we make sure that people are fresh, that they're not coming back across a dark desert in the middle of the night and pushing 16 hours in doing that. That's where we, that's where we get into trouble, and we, that's where, we, we want to avoid that.
That definitely addresses my concerns, having both the procedures and the training for them, for the mainly advisors with them, so thank you.
I was one of the people that was in town when the problem with the other van happened, and so that's why I brought it up when I was meeting with Dr. Stone, because we had a problem with the van, and it wasn't a good one. So, we need to stay away from the stuff that's not good.
Yes, and not only will it be brand-new, but it'll, it'll be a, a bus, it'll be engineered to meet the safety requirements of a bus, not a, not a passenger van.
I move that we accept 6.10 as presented.
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 611, Business Services, annual inspections for LHHS, Thunderbolt, Jamaica, and Smoke Tree Chillers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board members, annual inspections of chiller systems at both Lake Havasu High School and Thunderbolt Middle School were proactive measures that were requested by district maintenance staff. Through, thorough analysis of equipment functions can assist in early detection of potential mechanical issues and reduce the possibility of complete mechanical failure and shutdown of equipment. While machinery can fail without notice, proper preventative maintenance protocols can increase the longevity of equipment and hopefully provide awareness of potential mechanical issues, allowing time to properly plan and schedule needed repairs. Johnson Controls would be procured through state, the state contract, CTR 049763. They have, have provided a contract for five years to guarantee pricing as follows, and that is shown there within the action item. This will be year two for Lake Havasu High School and Thunderbolt, and year one for Jamaica and Smoke Tree. Purchasing and maintenance have reviewed this item.
Maintenance saves money. I, I move that we accept 611 as presented.
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 612, Business Services, the resolutions for fiscal year 2023-2024.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board members, resolutions 2023-2402 through 2023-2410 are necessary to continue our current practices through the 23-24 fiscal year. The resolutions as submitted are maintenance resolutions. It would not affect any substantial change in our current operating procedures.
I move that we accept 612 as, as presented.
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 613, Business Services, the vouchers for student activity funds and auxiliary funds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, vouchers for May of 2023, K-12 student activity funds for May 23, and auxiliary funds for May of 2023 are before you tonight.
I move that we accept it as presented.
I'll second it.
Yes.
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 Moving on to 7.1, our informational from our superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, summer school is underway and going well. I hope all of our staff are enjoying whatever summer break they get to have this year. I would like to thank Mr. Murray and the HR department for all the work that goes into the budget, because it starts with that compensation discussion that we have in the approval of the salary schedules for every employee in our district, and then culminating in this presentation that was before you tonight for the budget. And the only other thing I would like to share, for those of you who don't know, Andrea is our communications and community outreach person, and she will be leaving us in July because she has accepted a new position as the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. So, we're very proud of her and look forward to working with her in that capacity as well.
Moving on to 7.2, do we have any information from our governing board members?
Just a quick thing, just pointing out, if you've been watching Facebook, our teachers are busy this summer. There's a group of them who are doing the National Board Teacher Certification Program, so this is what our teachers do during their summer. I would probably be out on the beach, but they're learning how to teach our kids better. So, just letting you know that our, our teachers are doing that.
And then, do we have another call in the public? No? Any communications, board suggestions for future agenda items? Any clarifying questions from the media? No? Then I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
Yes.
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 This meeting is adjourned.